Okay. Start with the pledge to the flag. We have many flags to pledge to there. There we go. Pledge allegiance to the flag.
United States of America.
And to the republic. And nation, your God. Visible, just in justice roll. Well, I would like to, to thank everyone for, for joining this evening. There will be a time for public comments later in the, in the meeting time. Would also like to say that there was an executive session this evening prior to this meeting to discuss personnel and legal matters. So with that, Ricky, could I have a roll call, please?
Randy Birch.
Here.
Aldarian.
Here.
Michael Hess.
Here.
Cecilia Holt.
Here.
Dennis Ritter.
Here.
Eric Johnson.
Here.
Carl Nolte.
Here.
Jim Schroeder. Charles Scher.
Here.
And Sydney Sheets.
Here.
Great. We, we will start again by item number three again, just to go through this again to confirm with everyone that we're going to continue to operate the meeting in this order. So I'll read item number three and we'll just go through to vote. Recommendation of the administration of the Board of School Directors for Board Policy 003 functions. Approved to suspend the application of Board Policy 006.1 attendance at meetings via electronic communications, and authorize the use of virtual meeting platform for the conduct of the current and future public board meetings, which has been and shall be duly advertised and provided for required public participation in accordance with the Pennsylvania Sunshine Act until further determination by a majority vote of the board. And we are doing this again while COVID-19 restrictions are in place. So looking for a motion for item number three.
Eric, I'll move.
Second, Chuck.
Motion second. Any comments around item number three or questions?
I see Jim Schroeder is in the attendees, not the panelists.
Okay. So Jim can't speak at the moment is what you're saying? Is that what you're saying?
Correct.
Christian, can you, Christian, can you move him over? You are, I made you host instead of co-host. If you can click me as co-host, then I can control some of these. In the participants tab.
Okay, I think, I think we're okay now. Yeah.
All right. So any, any other comments regarding item number three? Hearing Ricky, can we have a roll call, please?
Randy Birch.
Yes.
Aldarian.
Yes.
Michael Hess.
Yes.
Cecilia Holt.
Yes.
Eric Johnson.
Yes.
Dennis Ritter.
Yes.
Jim Schroeder.
Yes.
Charles Scher.
Yes.
Carl Nolte.
Yes. So approved. Next is item four, the approval of minutes. Looking for approval of minutes from the April 20th, 2020 school board meeting. Do I have a motion?
Ritter moves.
Dennis moves. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion in a second. Any comments or corrections regarding the April 20th school board meeting minutes? Hearing none. Roll call, please, Ricky.
Aldarian.
Yes.
Michael Hess.
Yes.
Cecilia Holt.
Yes.
Eric Johnson.
Yes.
Dennis Ritter.
Yes.
Jim Schroeder. Charles Scher.
Yes.
Randy Birch.
Yes.
Carl Nolte.
Yes. So approved.
Next is the approval of the minutes from the April 27th, 2020 Budget and Finance Committee Meeting. So I have a motion.
So move, Jim.
Motion from Jim. Is there a second?
Second.
Second from Cecilia. Any comments or corrections regarding those Budget and Finance Committee Meeting Minutes? Hearing none. Roll call, please, Ricky.
Michael Hess.
Yes.
Cecilia Holt.
Yes.
Eric Johnson.
Yes.
Dennis Ritter.
Yes.
Jim Schroeder.
Yes.
Charles Scher.
Yes.
Randy Birch.
Yes.
Aldarian.
Yes.
Carl Nolte.
Yes.
Approved. Next, we will move to Communications and Reports. We'll start with item A, the Superintendent's Report, Mr. Tim Chatten.
Thank you, Mr. Nolte.
Randy, you got video. Is it working now?
It is.
It is working.
Is the correct?
What the?
Superintendent's report sharing. I apologize. I can't see what's being shared right now.
It says we're seeing your screen, but there's, but it's blank, Christian.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's completely white. Oh, there it is.
Now it's coming.
Yeah. Having some troubles with this this evening. Apologize. For Superintendent's Good News Report, the first bit of good news is a major one that we are, we're working through some details with staff and students from, from the high school. Mr. Flicker joining us this evening to share graduation plans for the class of 2020. Mr. Flicker.
Can you guys hear me okay?
We can.
All right. Well, thanks, Mr. Tim Chatten. So I'm glad I wore a tie. I thought I could dodge it, but, uh, that no cameras. That's why I take it off for a second. So I'm glad I didn't. Anyway, so, um, thank you, everybody. So what we've been working really hard on the last, I guess about two, two and a half weeks is what we can do to honor our seniors. And there's a lot of things going on. We've had a lot of collaboration with other school districts and so on and so forth. But what we have is a plan in place that allows us to, to give the seniors something that I, I think that, um, other seniors may be envious of in years to come. So what we're, what we have is really a two-part graduation proposal. The graduation date, I think that will be approved later is June 4th, but the diplomas will say June 5th because that's technically our rain date. And I wanted to have that in place because we needed to order those things and we will be signing them. So the plan in place of graduation is going to be June 4th with our rain date, June 5th. And you're thinking, well, why, why a rain date? Well, here's why. So we have pretty much two parts of this whole process. I, I received confirmation today that our caps and gowns will be here within the next week and a half, which is good. Senior obligation, the senior obligation process begins right around May 22nd, right before Memorial Day. They'll have AP exams, finish those things up, and then they'll transition into whatever finals they have to, they have to finish, as well as the obligations, bringing in laptops, calculators, textbooks, just housekeeping things, cleaning out lockers. So we have a pretty nice process in place with about 103 seniors right now looking to graduate. To get, to have them come in in groups of 10 is not a, a real big stretch. And spread them out. Each student will, Christmas City is on board. Christmas City will be joining us for those three days of senior obligations. And the reason why Christmas City, who does a lot of the work for us, and they're great, they're going to come in and video and be the videographer for this whole process. So the student, the seniors will receive a cap and gown and receive it and keep it because to collect it again would be just a whole different. It's, it wasn't that much of an additional cost and the senior class picked up that additional cost. I believe it was $28 a cap and gown. Times 110, the class picked that up. They'll get their cap and gown and Mr. Brett and I will read the students' names as they cross the stage in their cap and gowns at the high school. Traditionally, as if we were there watching them the last day of school. The videographer from Christmas City will watch this whole process and record each one of the students' names, first, middle, and last being mentioned. They'll splice set all together along with the, Mr. Tim Chatten's small greeting, my small greeting, the distinguished alums, the senior class president, the vice president, and the Val and Sal. They'll have that whole process and put that all together in a nice package. And then the plan is to have that run June 3rd around 6:00 PM on multiple different media outlets throughout the community, right around supper time is the goal to share that part one. So June 3rd. Hopefully what that, what we want to do is then, so flash forward to June 4th. What June 4th will look like, I'm reading off this here for a second. June 4th will look like the entire school. Now, there'll be information, there'll be cards, students will get information. We're also looking to purchase signs for the sides of each car, for each student's car, the one side of Main Street and the other side of Main Street. It'll have their name and their graduation picture on both sides of the car. And you say, why the car? Well, we're going to meet the, we're going to meet at Beegee in the parking lot in A2, right around 4:30 or so on the 4th, Thursday the 4th. And we're going to have a processional through Cootstown. I've already spoken with the mayor, the police chief, the fire company. We'll have a little miniature processional heading through Cootstown. The police will take charge, lead the way with Mayor Schlegel as well. And then trailing us will be the police as well. Each student, each car will have the, a graduate in their, in their cap and gown and their, their relatives, their, their mom, dad, whomever. Whoever they have, choose to have in the car with them, similar to if they received a ticket for graduation. There's only four, five or six tickets that go to a student and then the overflow is always D17. So that'll be the processional with a student, with the graduate in the car making their way down Main Street. The lights will be stopped. And people can choose to come out if it's a nice night and just line the streets for the, to honor the graduates, honking horns, waving. Mr. Nolte, myself, Mr. Tim Chatten will be in the, in the processionals as well. We'll head down Main. We'll make a right at Turkey Hill. From there, we'll hop out, Mr. Nolte, Mr. Tim Chatten and myself. We'll hop out quickly and take our positions on the stage. We're going to have an outdoor stage built at the, in front of the fish tank lobby, right in front of the main office. We'll have stage in the background will be the plants and the flowers and all sorts of things. The traditional Cootstown emblem that hangs above the graduates. And then we'll have like a red carpet, if you will, sidewalk. So students will, actually as students drive in with their parents, pass the marquee, we'll have teachers, as traditionally, line the, the guard, if you will. As the students drive through, the teachers will be spaced out lining the sidewalk. And then the students will hop out of the car, make their way down the, the sidewalk to the three of us as we present to them their diploma. And videographer will be there as well in front of the, the flagpole, taking those pictures. And then they'll make their way back down again and sort of disembark and get back in the vehicle again with their folks right around the bike rack in front of the, the gym entrance, if that makes sense. And then in the background, we have a plan. Now, again, the, the goal is to, to do these things and we're looking like things are going to be in good shape, but at the same time, we could change these always plans very quickly and if, but the goal is right now, if, if all possible, we would like to have in some capacity, the band participating, playing some sort of a repeat of a pomp of circumstance, if you will, with a really nice spread out. So that's in its infancy phase. We think we can, we can pull it off quite nicely. But again, that's, that's something that would really be icing on the cake if we could have the band there, but there's no promises just yet. But, um, that's something that in the distance, we'd like to have. So that too will be video recorded. And then on June 5th, again, June 5th, the rain date. When I say rain date, it's sort of like the monsoon date. If we have a little spritz, we'd like to, this is a big process. We like to have, have the event. But if, if not, we can postpone to the 5th. And then ultimately on June 5th, Mr. Tim Chatten will make an announcement, a brief announcement to the whole community saying, on behalf of the, the state and my credentials, I'd like to say that students of 2020 are now graduating. So every parent will watch their child go across the stage in two forms. One, literally on our stage, recorded. And then actually physically in person, they will watch them sort of drive by as they go across the stage, get their diploma and make their way back down. So would I miss Mr. Tim Chatten? Anything?
My apologies. I, I don't believe you missed anything. I think pretty comprehensive. I think it's going to be a, you know, as planned, we're going to work on some timing things, I think, over the course of the next two to three weeks, just to be as close as possible to how long this is going to take. But with the collaboration of the university, the borough, many within the school community, I think we can make this memorable event that will be very unique and students are, will have something to be proud of as we recognize their accomplishment as the class of 2020, Coates Henry High School.
Okay. Can I just say real quick, I, I just want to say thanks to Mr. Flicker for putting this together. It sounds like a really elaborate, glorious plan for, for our seniors and they've, they've missed out on a lot this year. And I think this will go a long way in making up to that. And I think it's also going to be a great thing for the parents and the families. And we should point out that there's, one of our graduating seniors is, this might be her last meeting on the board, if I'm not mistaken. And I wonder if she has any input into this proposal.
I spoke with Mr. Flicker. Hi, everyone. My name's Sydney Sheets. I spoke with Mr. Flicker, Ms. Calley, and some of the other senior officers. And we're definitely on board with the event and everything that Mr. Flicker described. I think that this year with everything that's happening and the opportunities that we are going to miss out on, I think that this is a great substitute that still allows us to connect and celebrate our senior year and all of the work from high school throughout. So I'm definitely on board with this idea and I'm excited to see what everyone else thinks and if it's going to be passed.
One more, I love the idea of parading our graduating students down Main Street. And I wonder if that might be something to revisit in future years with or without a pandemic.
Let's, let's vote for without a pandemic on that one. Once we, once we see, I, it is, I mean, you know, we do believe Coates Henry High School and the school district as a whole is so much a part of the community and the community is a part of what we do that, especially the way this has impacted everyone, that, that is like a nice effect that having that.
I just love that idea. Yeah.
Yeah. I think it's going to be fun and I think we'll look at, see, we'll find, just like every, we are looking, everything we do as a result of this COVID-19 school closure as an opportunity to learn and get better. And I think graduation is going to be the same thing. We're going to learn some things about ourselves and our community about what makes this a memorable event. And we can look at making it different in the future by taking the pieces that we love.
Hey, this is Mike. I just had a, a quick question again about the logistics of June 3rd, I think it was with the, the recording of the students, like of the, how are we timing, like getting the students in to do that?
Do you want me to answer that, Mr. Chatten?
Yeah, please, please.
Okay. So, yeah, Mr. Hess, so the, the obligation process that seniors just kind of have to go through, laptops, library books, things they owe. We're going to have that over the course of right, pretty much right, a few days before Memorial Day weekend, and then a few days after be that process. When they come in and do those things and when we have them scheduled in and spaced out, that's when they'll receive their cap and gowns. And on those days is when we have the pictures and their names being called going across the stage. And then what'll get spliced is all those names being mentioned along with, and that's about, so that's about a week and a half prior to June 3rd. So the Christmas City studio, part of the process and part of having them help us with this process will be editing all those names in to a nice smooth transition between names, alphabetized, as well as the traditional commencement process of the bookends of myself and then Mr. Tim Chatten, the distinguished alum and a couple of those people. So it'll, over the course of like seven or eight days, we'll have every student's name and the speeches. And then on June 3rd, it will sort of drop, I guess, is the, is the lingo out to the community. Is that, am I making myself any clearer on that?
Yeah, I, I understood a little better. Thank you.
Yep, yep.
Um, this is Chuck Scher. I just had, well, first, thank you, Mr. Flicker for, you know, putting all the effort into putting together that plan. I just had a question. I, I know that the school usually did a pretty extensive award ceremony for the seniors, for scholarships and other senior awards. Is that going to be now incorporated into the graduation ceremony? Is that going to be addressed in some other fashion this year?
Uh, yes. So that will be run virtually on the date of, oh boy, the date is?
I think they said May 17th.
That's right, Sid. Senior awards were, were to be held for May 13th. The public will made, it'll be made available to the public on May 20th, Mr. Sure. May 20th, Wednesday.
Oh, is there a, okay, is there going to be some sort of virtual ceremony or?
Yes, sir. Virtual rollout.
Okay, excellent. Thank you.
As well as a baccalaureate, I just should have, should have said that too. Tomorrow, I'm meeting with the seniors, the entire class at around, I think 11 o'clock tomorrow morning and to speak to them and go through a lot of these things. And sort of want to, I, you do it in bits and pieces. You, you share with the students what they think to make sure everything's okay. And then you, give you all a chance to kind of process as well. And then tomorrow, say, you know, yea or nay, here's where we're heading. So just kind of do it in phases. But we have a really nice comprehensive plan that I'll send out to the entire senior class regarding the cap and gowns and those things. And if they want to participate in baccalaureate, that will be recorded as well if they, they choose to do so.
Thank you, Mr. Flicker. Thank you. You know, your team did a great job of collaborating to come up with something that could be very special, working with students. And Sydney, thank you for your words and your voice today. I think, you know, that was as the plans were developing, the big next step was, all right, let's, now we feel like we have something to be proud of. We want to share it with students and we were thrilled to know that students were behind it. So thank you for, for coming on tonight and sharing that with us. There's no other questions from the board at that time. I'll move on to just the one more good news. This, good news just continues in that, you know, our virtual learning program, you know, there, there, there's no words to really express the work that goes into running a virtual learning program from the teacher standpoint, the parent standpoint. I mean, it's everyone who's involved and the students that it's, it's a unique, different opportunity for us. But with everybody working together, we've seen that there's a great deal of success. You know, we have worked with everyone and every parent calls to inquire about ways that we could support them differently, to find different means to do so. The Reading Eagle, Dave Meekle from the Reading Eagle reached out and was looking for a teacher to, you know, share some thoughts about virtual learning. And fortunately, Mrs. Hand was willing to communicate. We thought it was going to simply be a quote or to, it turned out into some, turned out to be a few pictures above the fold on the front page of the Reading Eagle, discussing virtual learning along with some other teachers from throughout the county. We, if you read the article, you'd see that Mrs. Hand shared that four times a week is time set aside to meet with students, including three lessons. Students are being offered everything that they have in their normal day and really stress the idea of how important it is to connect with students and their teachers from a social standpoint. And believing those connections and relationships are really what leads to a successful virtual, virtual learning environment. We couldn't be more proud of the efforts of all of our teachers and Mrs. Hand for being willing to be the one that was quoted and photographed for, for the newspaper. So the good news is that virtual learning continues and students are, many of students' needs are being met, even though there are challenges for some. We're grateful for our parents, teachers and families for working through this and the best for our students. And that is my good news report.
If, if I could just add something on that, I'm a Cub Scout den leader and I've been holding Cub Scout meetings on Zoom. And I've got half the number of third graders that any one of these teachers has. Yeah, I've learned firsthand how difficult it is to manage on Zoom. And so my, my hat's off to what these teachers have been able to pull off.
Thank you. It's, the teachers have done a fantastic job as we've, as we've said, and we're really just proud of the, proud of the efforts and everybody working together to make sure that we're seeing the best results possible in a circumstance that none of us asked for. So thank you, Mr. Johnson.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Tim Chatten. Any other comments or questions for Mr. Tim Chatten? Okay, I think we move on to the budget presentation. Mr. Miller will be sharing.
Should I share my screen or you can share it from there?
Do you want me to share?
Yeah, that'll be fine.
Just tell me when to move.
Okay, we're going to do the projected year end numbers tonight. So you can move to the next slide. We'll look at revenue expense and then possible ending scenarios. Next slide. The total budgeted revenue for 1920 was $33,239,000. My projected revenue is $32,860,782. A deficit of $378,000. Now, this, my projected revenue does not include revenue that's in the budget, our access revenue. If you recall, every year we budgeted, received some access money, but we have never yet actually drawn that money down as revenue. So if we were to draw that $378,000 down, our revenue deficit would be only $51,413. Next slide, please. Also note, there are two large properties in our district that were included in our real estate tax revenue. Who, the properties did not receive their, their tax bill until Mar, or January 1st. So they were considered interim taxes then. The flat amount was due the other day. I'm not sure if they paid them or not. But if they, those two properties have $201,971 of additional revenue associated with them. So you know, hopefully we'll see that money soon. The flat amount was due 4:30. After that, they go into penalty period. So we'll just keep our eyes open for that.
Now, Mr. Miller, just to, just to clarify, they were not in your revenue projections?
They were in the budget. They were not included in the numbers that I, they were included in the budget, they were not included in the projection.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. More on that later. So the, the projections I've done, they're in hopes that all of our revenues do not totally dry up, dry up in the last two months of the year. What I did was I used the first nine months of actuals. I looked at historic figures for what happens in the last three months. And I lowered those figures by the amounts of projection that was done by the Berks EIT office as far as what they're thinking tax amounts will lower by. Which was 5% in May and 10% in June. So we'll just have to see how it goes. Next slide, please. We'll move on to the expenses. The budgeted expenses were $33,239,267. If you recall, we had a zero bottom line in our budget. The projected expenses I came up with are $32,473,922, under budget by $765,000. If you recall, all the retirements we had last year, a lot of those positions were put in the budget at the retiring teachers' expense amount, salary amount. So the replacement teachers were, were hired at lower amounts, obviously. So that's, that's responsible for most of that short call there. Other line items that were lower than budget, substitute teachers, obviously, we only had nine months of them, transportation. There were no snow removal costs. There's some easing of utility costs at the end of the year and we did not have to use our budgetary reserve. Next slide, please. So I've come up with a couple of different scenarios here. This is the last slide of the presentation here. Scenario number one is just the revenue I presented, the expenses I presented. You see our bottom line there, 386,860. Scenario two presents the option, if we would draw down that access money with 327, you'll see the bottom line there. Scenario three shows the revenue I presented. It shows those tax receipts coming in that I mentioned earlier. Shows the expenses, bottom line, then it would be 588,8. And scenario four, which is the most rosy of all of them, shows the revenue I presented. It shows drawing in the access money. It shows receiving those tax receipts. And it also shows the expenses and you'll see that bottom line of 915,9. So.
Dave, can I ask, the access money, did we budget a withdrawal from that or use of that money? Or how does that all work? Was that budgeted and we just don't usually do it?
That's correct.
So it stays there, it would be available next year if we didn't draw it down this year? Is that how that?
Correct. We have about five, a little over $500,000 of access money stored with PDE. We can draw it down whenever we want to.
The access fund serves almost like a, an assigned fund balance for special education, but it's hosted through the, through PDE. We could take it anytime we want, but it has served as a rainy day fund that we could go to when necessary. That's a large number to take out of there. You know, that'll draw us down a well under 200, under 200,000. And then, you know, say, a family moves in that we require significant needs that we didn't budget for. We wouldn't have that, and we would just need to pull from our own budget. It really operates as an assigned fund balance.
Since I came here back in 2008, right after I got here, we used access money to buy two vans that we use to transport special ed students. And last year, we drew down $100,000 just because you're not supposed to keep more than $500,000 in there. So that's the only use of access funds that we've done since I've been here in 2008.
If we need some, some kid needs to have a special assignment to a private, another school, that, that money could be used for that?
That's correct.
What, what will our access fund balance be? Dave, if we don't draw any funds down? Are we in a position where we need to draw some money next year again? You said 500,000 is the?
Yeah, I don't, I don't know that we're going to get above, to get significantly, significantly above 500,000 next year. I mean, not surprisingly, we don't get a whole lot of access money for every eligible dollar we spend. So I don't think we will have to draw any down next year.
And just to be clear, it can, it can, I'm sorry.
I could say, we don't have to draw the full 327. We could just do a portion and maybe say, keep 200 for a rainy day fund or some other number that you might think is prudent for us to have in case of a change of circumstances with special need services that need to be provided?
Yeah, we could absolutely do that.
It's also not a decision we have to make in any, you know, it's not like a decision you have to make now or in any particular time. We could make it at the end of the year, once we know these are no longer projected numbers and they are actual final numbers. And the 500,000 mark, it's, there's no, it's not as if that you can't go above 500,000. It's more of a political point, quite honestly, that when some within the state start looking at accounts and saying, why are we contributing? Why is the state continuing to offer that money? Districts aren't using it. That's sort of the number that they have traditionally looked at to say, well, speed district, X, X amount of districts are not drawing it down below 500,000. It's more of a political point that the state tries to guide us on so much as a, an actual one.
But that money does need to be used for something in the area of special ed?
Yes.
Yes.
And it is not intended to be used for reoccurring costs. It's intended to be used for one-time costs.
So if if we decrease our budgeting for special education costs by a couple hundred thousand dollars this coming year, then we might just draw down on some of the access funds. Do I have the right perspective there?
We, we always could. Yep, that's, we could do that. Again, it's, then it's using money from this account that wouldn't be there. You know, it's, we theoretically could, or not theoretically, we could. We could withdraw everything that we have if we have it signed to something for, in our access and have it in an assigned fund balance for ourselves and then use it as we see fit. But it's always served as that rainy day. But we could not budget for some things in special ed and then from our actual budget and plan on taking it from access. It's really just a matter of how we do it on paper.
But we do need to treat it like a fund balance. We cannot use it for ongoing expenses. I mean, maybe we can through some kind of bookkeeping, but we should not use it for ongoing expenses. So if we're going to draw some of it down for this year's expenses, perhaps you could highlight which one, which ones would be those that won't reoccur next year and the year after that and the year after that. And those could be subject to being paid out of the access this year.
Yes, that's, I mean, that's what, we do have to assign it to certain costs when we do draw it down. So that's how, that's exactly what we would be doing when we submit for those, those funds.
You know, 500,000 sounds high, but given what can happen in special ed,
Yeah.
I wouldn't want much less than 300.
Out of district placement can be, you know, very easily, it could cost over $100,000 quickly.
It could be very likely 750,000 at the end of next year.
Not only if we get $250,000 more in access money, Jim.
Yeah, we won't get that much more.
We won't get that much.
Always being conservative. We got 327 last year.
No, 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 this is, we've been accruing this money over many years. We typically don't see anything more than maybe 40,000 that we gain each year. Correct me if I'm wrong on that, Dave, but it's not.
Right.
This is money we've accrued over time. And because we haven't drawn it down, we are able to do so now if we wish. One other thing to consider with the access. Again, we could wait till we know the actual end of the year numbers. But with access, you know, one thing with COVID-19 is there is the potential for special education litigation at the end of this school year because, you know, we're operating under a model that is difficult to meet all of our students' needs, you know, so that's just something we want to keep. And that money might be better in a rainy day fund for that. So it's just a consideration. But again, we'd also have money in our fund balance for that if truly there was a rainy day.
Let me, let me just take a minute to explain access money again, because I'm thinking I may not have explained it correctly or properly to everyone. Over the years, during the year, we spend money on special education things. There's a report that we fill out. There's a formula that goes through, for all those dollars we spend, the federal government gives us a certain amount of access money. So that access money builds up in PDE, and that has built up over the years under the $500,000, $600,000 range. When I talk about putting it in our budget here, that means drawing down the money that's already there at PDE to use as revenue. It doesn't mean that we've earned $327,000 of access revenue just in one year. It means we're drawing down our, our bankroll money that we've stored with PDE. Does that make more sense?
I understand. I'm just not used to seeing balances in a projected income statement scenario. So I misunderstood what was there.
Okay.
So, Mr. Miller, I do have one question on other tax receipts. Those $201,000, we would expect to receive that at some point in time?
Some point in time, yes.
Right. So I mean, if we, so really, is scenario one, isn't really a valid option? Scenario three is the valid option if you're doing planning. You, you're going to, we would expect to receive those, those tax, that, that tax income, whether that's April 30th or if it's delayed. I mean, we would expect to get that income.
Yes, we would. I just don't know if it's going to be this year.
Isn't it one of those, the hotel?
Yes, it is.
That might be several years.
Well, we'd expect to get it out. It would go in fund balance, right? It's income.
That's correct.
Everything, everything like this is done in probabilities, you know, so, you know, so it's, you look at that and you say, well, there's 85% or 90% probability we get it this year. If we don't get it this year and we got it next year, really have no difference to us. Because we're not in a position where our checking account's going to go below zero.
Unless, unless the hotel decides that they somehow are not able to pay or they can go through a bankruptcy. My point is this. The trouble with Act One, as I keep pointing out, is you can't make up for shortfalls. So we can budget in the hopes that we get revenue, and if we do, everything's fine. But if we do not, then we can't make it up. It is going to put a time bomb to boards down the line when they will not be able to balance the budget. And because the money that we've been using to balance the budget up till then is gone. And I'm very reluctant to budget on an unreasonable expectation that revenue will somehow appear. And I'm very concerned that some of that money is coming from a hotel, which is generating zero revenue for the last several months. And perhaps well into the future will generate zero revenue. I can easily see them going perhaps to get a tax reduction from the county because the property is no longer of any value. I'm just very, very cautious as to what we assume is going to come in. I'm fiscally cautious too, but I mean, even under the worst-case scenario, I guess that would be scenario one, right?
Yeah.
You still have a bottom line of $386,000. You, none of that money comes in.
Right.
And if we don't access any of the access funds.
Or we don't receive those extra taxes, Chuck, right? We store $386,000.
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely.
Really reasonable to use a $500,000 number as a round, as a good round number for what we would expect to be ahead of budget. So we budgeted a zero balance last year and we'll probably finish about half a million, plus or minus 100 ahead.
But even if we say would take some of that 201,000, because those taxes that they're paying were on past assessment, not on something that's happening out in the future, right?
It's based on their assessed value.
For the, for the previous year.
Right.
So they wouldn't, I don't think they could get them totally removed. They were functional and operating during that time. They just can get them delayed in payment.
You're right. Typically, they would look to reduce assessments going forward, and these are, these taxes are currently due for, for an existing assessment.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I'll just weigh in on it. I fully expect to get that money someday.
Someday, okay.
So it's a little different than a fund balance, putting it into the budget.
Yeah, I mean, we don't have the money on our books yet.
So even if you added half of that, just being pessimistic, half of that to the 386, you give you 486. You know, I think there's some alternatives here to look at some.
Half of it does not sound unreasonable to me either. I just, counting on everything is.
And we have a history. What is it? 97% tax collection rate? In the year that it's assessed and then more afterwards? That's a long history. In the worst-case scenario, what have we ever sunk down to? 95% in the year it was assessed and then we get it following years?
No, we have a great history of.
We can move on. We're arguing over, over $100,000.
Yeah. Well, and we don't have to make the decision tonight anyway. These are numbers to think about till next week.
All right. Well, that's, that's it for my presentation tonight.
Thanks, Dave.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Dave. Happy to, happy to see that the numbers are trending in the right direction, you know, as we see a clearer picture of what the budget impact on expenses is for this year. So thank you again for your preparation.
Thanks, Dave.
Thanks, Dave. Any other questions for any board members around the budget presentation? Again, thank you, Mr. Miller. We will look forward to next week and understanding what we look like for this year's budget coming up. Appreciate the, appreciate the presentation.
You're welcome.
With that, we will move on to the new business section. We will start with item number A, personnel. So there is one item under personnel, looking for a motion regarding personnel.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion at second. Any comments or questions regarding personnel?
I'll just make a quick comment. I've been using my children as unknowing spies for the school board. And so when I mentioned to Bridget, who's in the fifth grade, not with Mr. Gaiman, but she told me that he's got a very, very good reputation among the fifth graders. And although it's a happy thing that he's moving on to other ambitions, he was doing a great job for us and he deserves our gratitude.
This is Mike. I just want to second what Eric said. My daughter does have Mr. Gaiman. He's been a fantastic teacher throughout this year, so definitely going to miss him, but congratulate him on finding some other endeavor to move into.
Great, thank you. Any, any other comments regarding personnel?
I mean, Echo, we could, we could all go around and around. Mr. Gaiman did a fantastic job for us this year. Kids, you know, truly engaging, opportunity to get into the classroom. You know, we're losing a great teacher, but we'll take even one year out of a great teacher anytime we can for, for our students. So wish him the best on his next endeavor in life.
Okay, could we have a roll call, Ricky, please?
Cecilia Holt? Yes. Eric Johnson?
Yes.
Dennis Ritter?
Yes.
Charles Scher?
Yes.
Dim Schrader?
Yes.
Randy Birch?
Yes.
Al Darian?
Yes.
Michael Hess?
Yes.
Yes.
Paul Nolte?
Yes. So approved. Next will be item B, policy maintenance. And I would take all three of these policies together unless someone would like them to be split separately and voted on individually. Okay, hearing no objection. Together? Okay, well, we'll go with.
Question in light of what we got back from the, the PSBA, do we want to put jewels back in?
Can I, Dennis, go through, read and see if we get a motion, then we'll have the discussion?
Okay.
So item B, policy maintenance, recommendation of the policy and curriculum committee that the board of school directors approve the second reading and adoption of the following policies. The first one is policy 222, tobacco and vaping products. The second is policy 323, tobacco and vaping products. And the third is policy 904, public attendance at school events. Do I have a motion?
So moved. Second.
A motion at second. Comments or questions, Dr. Ritter?
Just in light of the information we got from PSBA, do we want to have that language put back in? The mentioning of jewels and their explanation, I think, makes sense.
Wouldn't it be better in the administrative regulation implementing the policy rather than memorializing the brand name and the policy itself?
Well, they seem to think it should be in the policy. So that's all I'm saying. We got that information today or when this information for our board meeting tonight, so.
Well, I think they said that they had debated that a lot. And in the end, that did come through into their suggested writing. But I think very good points were raised by our board about the particular brand name. And I think that enforcing the policy isn't problematic. isn't problematic if that brand name isn't in there, because it is covered under the broader language.
Yeah, and so the fix for that, going along with, with Dr. Darian shared, is that, you know, we, we will, we can use the administrative regulations that govern a lot of this, specifically for the student, the two-hundredth policy would be the student handbook. You know, so when we produced the student handbooks for twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one, you know, we can specifically name Jewel in there, as it is very relevant now, you know, as a product, and then as it becomes less relevant, and there's a more generic term, you know, that, then we can adjust that terminology that would still cover us with the specificity, but not honor it in a way that's truly board policy. So that would be the, that would be the path to honoring the idea the PSBA shared, but also not putting a brand name in a policy.
I, I, he was brilliant, Al, on that. I think we just leave it the way it is.
With that caveat, I'll, I'll, I'll vote, my vote will be to approve.
Okay. Any other comments or, or conversation regarding item B? Hearing none. Roll call, please, Ricky.
Eric Johnson?
Yes.
Dennis Ritter?
Yes.
Jim Schrader?
Yes.
Joshua?
Yes.
Randy Birch?
Yes.
Al Darian?
Yes.
Michael Hess?
Yes.
Cecilia Holt?
Yes.
Carl Nolte?
Yes. So approved. Next will be item C, the twenty twenty summer school programs, and I will not be reading the entire list of staff, paraeducators, dates, now workdays, school students, all those things for the different programs. I guess the one thing that everyone has that on their agenda, they can read that in, in essence of time. I guess the, the caveat I will bring is the bottom, where summer programs are approved as a virtual program, correct, Mr. Tim Chatten? This will all be virtual, and subject change based on guidance from the.
At this time, we're planning them all to be virtual, you know, including that as addition to the summer reading program. And, you know, unless things were significantly changed, where to get guidance from Pennsylvania Department of Ed to do something different, which I don't anticipate, they will operate virtually.
Okay. So do I have a motion for item C?
So moved.
Ritter.
So we have a motion, a second. Any comments or questions regarding item C? Hearing none. Roll call, please, Ricky.
Dennis Ritter?
Yes.
Jim Schrader?
Yes.
Joshua?
Yes.
Randy Birch?
Yes.
Al Darian?
Yes.
Michael Hess?
Yes.
Cecilia Holt?
Yes.
Eric Johnson?
Yes.
Carl Nolte?
Yes, so approved. Next is item D, the stable veterans exemption. Pennsylvania Department of Military and Veterans Affairs is recommending that the following properties be approved for exemption of all real estate taxes. PIN number six-three-five-four-six-three-zero-zero-eight-eight-one-six-seven-six. PIN number four-five-five-four-four-six-zero-three-zero-four-four-three-five-eight. And PIN number four-five-five-four-four-six-zero-three-zero-four-four-three-five-eight. Do I have a motion?
Move, Al. Second.
Motion, a second. Any comments or question regarding item D?
It looks to me like this second two PIN numbers are identical.
Yeah, it looks like they are too.
Yeah.
Is there, is there, is, is that just a repeat, Ricky, or Christian, or is that should be two different, another PIN?
It should, let me look at it here quickly. Okay, we're missing is five-five-five-four-four-four-zero-zero-nine-two-nine-six-seven-one.
All right, so PIN five-five-five-four-four-four-zero-zero-nine-two-nine-six-seven-one. Right, that's, Dave, that was the number, so we'll add that to the, to this. So when we go to, uh, vote on this motion, this PIN will be added to the, to the record.
Good catch, sir.
Be kind.
Any other comments or questions around item D? So we will be voting on this with the new PIN that we just went over, that Dave provided. So with that, roll call, please, Ricky.
Jim Schrader? Joshua?
Yes.
Present, Jim.
Okay, thank you. Joshua?
Yes.
Randy Birch?
Yes.
Al Darian? Michael Hess?
Yes.
Cecilia Holt?
Yes.
Eric Johnson?
Yes.
Dennis Ritter?
Yes.
Carl Nolte?
Yes, so approved. Next is item E, employee vision insurance. It is the recommendation of the administration that the Board of School Directors approve the agreement with Capital Blue Cross to provide vision insurance for direct employees for the twenty twenty, twenty-two one school year, rates to be the same as the two thousand nineteen dash twenty rates. Do I have a motion?
Ritter moves.
Motion, is there a second?
Second.
Second, motion, a second. Any comments or questions regarding item E? Hearing none, Ricky. Roll call, please.
Joshua?
Yes.
Randy Birch?
Yes.
Al Darian?
Yes.
Michael Hess?
Yes.
Cecilia Holt?
Yes.
Eric Johnson?
Yes.
Dennis Ritter?
Yes.
Jim Schrader?
Yes.
Carl Nolte?
Yes. So approved. Next is item F, the fire equipment agreement. It is the recommendation of the administration that the Board of School Directors approve the agreement with Kissel Brian to inspect our fire extinguisher and hoses at a price of one thousand eight hundred twenty-six dollars and forty-six cents, and to supply one-off service compliant testing at a price of five hundred five dollars and fifty-two cents. Do I have a motion?
Eric, I'll move.
Eric, is there a second?
Second.
A motion and a second. Any comments or questions regarding item F? Hearing none. Roll call, please, Ricky.
Randy Birch?
Yes.
Al Darian?
Yes.
Michael Hess?
Yes.
Cecilia Holt?
Yes.
Eric Johnson?
Yes.
Dennis Ritter?
Yes.
Jim Schrader?
Yes.
Joshua?
Yes.
Carl Nolte?
Yes, so approved. Next is item G, IMR digital. It is the recommendation of the administration that the Board of School Directors approve the service of IMR digital to scan special education student files for the attached fee schedule. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Motion, is there a second?
Al, second.
Motion, a second. Any comments or questions regarding item G? Hearing none. Roll call, please, Ricky.
Al Darian?
Yes.
Michael Hess?
Yes.
Cecilia Holt?
Yes.
Eric Johnson?
Yes.
Dennis Ritter?
Yes.
Jim Schrader?
Yes.
Joshua?
Yes.
Randy Birch?
Yes.
Carl Nolte?
Yes. So approved. Next is item H, graduation date. It is the recommendation, administration and Board of School Directors approve June fourth, two thousand twenty, as the graduation date for the class of two thousand twenty. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
A motion, a second. Any comments or questions regarding item H?
Should the rain date be noted here, or not?
We can note it in the minutes. You know, we all know the plan. It's the, the official graduation date.
Right.
Is the fifth, so we can have Ricky note it in the minutes.
Okay.
Any other comments?
Just thanks again to Mr. Flicker and his team for putting this together under very extraordinary circumstances. Very nice job by them.
Yeah, here.
I'd just like to take note, I see, and the participants list, Mr. Brett's on there, and, you know, we talked about Mr. Flicker's team. Mr. Brett's a key part of that, tuning in tonight. Thank you, Brett, for all your work and preparation on this particular detail, in addition to everything else.
They just need to guarantee a sunny day now.
There we go. Something needs to work in their favor.
So, again, appreciate all the, all the work. Roll call, Ricky, please?
Michael Hess?
Yes.
Cecilia Holt?
Yes.
Eric Johnson?
Yes.
Dennis Ritter?
Yes.
Jim Schrader?
Yes.
Joshua?
Yes.
Randy Birch?
Yes.
Al Darian?
Yes.
Carl Nolte?
Yes. So approved. Next is item I, introduction of new business by board members. Or anyone on the board that has something they would like to bring forward?
Yeah, I, I'd like to. Reading the letters regarding extending the school year and the difficulty some people are having with the education at home, I don't think we can do this for an entire year. Especially if we're gonna want to have some semblance of a normal economy going. Somehow schools are going to have to provide something more than we did at the end. I don't know what that looks like. I mean, if, if kids are gonna be in the building, how do we, how do we, how do we deal with the fact that most kids go to school because of the social interaction, not the education? That's kind of the peanut butter you wrap around the pill the dog is gonna swallow. I have no idea what we may want to do for next year. But at this table are sitting eight of the smartest people I know. And I think if we start thinking about it, and seeing how things develop over the summer, perhaps with, again, the very capable administrative and faculty, we can come up with some suggestions as to how to deal with the, the situation come next year, if we're still in some kind of social distancing. I just don't think we should sit back and assume everything will go back to the way it used to be. I think we, we really need to start thinking about it. And yes, professional staff is capable of some of it, but you eight folks have an awful lot to think about and say as well. I, I think we should all start doing that.
Yeah, I think with the uncertainty of the upcoming school year, or maybe never knowing what could, could happen next, you know, we have every intention to get this year here, to use some time with our teaching staff and administration to look at ways we, you know, what if we start the year in a virtual setting next year? What does it look like? What could we do different? How do we meet students' needs differently? The great challenge is, you know, when we have students come to us, y'all know this, we can meet their individual needs differently, because we have this place, this location, this time dedicated to where they're going to be. We isolate all the other factors, we isolate from all the other factors, including, you know, parents', work schedules, and so on, to bring everybody to one place where we can do everything we need to meet their needs, and it's just a challenge to do that when all those factors are moving, and, you know, there is no way to isolate them. You know, so we don't, we have to consider, does school look different ways for different students next year, the more so than ever has, you know, are we, do we have partial, if we have social distancing, we spend part of day in school, run buses twice a day, and do other, the rest of schooling is asynchronous learning, you know, we just have to consider all those options. Knowing that we, it could be thrust upon us at any time, if we don't see a great improvement over the summer and into the fall of the treatments and care for COVID-nineteen. So we will be bringing those, but any thoughts, and, you know, as, as Dr. Darian shares, you know, the adversity of thought is always the best way to approach things. So with a board having different perspectives than, than us as educators directly, sometimes we're always open to, to hear thoughts on that.
I mean, it's not just thinking outside the box. I think we have to pretend the box doesn't exist.
Yeah. Very much so.
Christian, is there any? Go, go ahead.
Will it be dictated by the state, Christian?
I would anticipate it being dictated by the state, you know, if we are allowed in our buildings, you know, we'll, I, we'll do everything we can to take the precautions that are recommended in our buildings, but I, I think it very much will be dictated by the state.
Is, is there any thought, Christian, to, uh, maybe start a small group with superintendents that are in very similar, I'll say rural school situations, you know, maybe Brandywine, Hamburg, Fleetwood, kind of Topahock and every, and because we're all, you know, all in this together kind of thing, not just individual school districts, maybe what, what went right for schools, what, what was difficult, what, you know, what their plans will be as well, to kind of share ideas?
Absolutely. We meet minimum twice a week as superintendents, you know, and then we're breaking off into other, other smaller groups to think about how to approach this differently, whole school. You know, some school districts have varying degrees of size and success in their academies, but that is not what this is. You know, this is not a virtual academy. We, we replicated, academy exists for families, teachers, and students who have selected. We are, we had, we've got it running right away, and we have to find different needs. So, yeah, that's, definitely conversations to collaborate with those other schools, not only across the county, but across the state, on what success could look like in a different environment.
Yeah, but even to Al's point, next year, right, how would you, how would you do social distancing? How would you, you know, try and do those different things that I think are gonna be a challenge for everyone? So, good, I think that's good collaboration. Any, any other new business by board members? Okay, hearing none. We'll move to public comment. Anyone in the public that would like to make a comment? And I would let, is that Dr. Lever or Christian, is that who would determine if there's someone that wants to comment?
Either one of us can. I'm, I'm watching it right now.
So it's open right now, if anybody in the public has a comment?
I don't see.
None, okay. We will move on then from here. Item seven is the informational items. Folks have, folks have in their packet, board members listed there, where information they already received. Item eight is upcoming public meetings. May eleventh, there will be Policy and Curriculum Committee meeting at six PM, which will be virtual. May eleventh, that same day, there's a Budget and Finance Committee meeting at seven PM, which will be virtual. And May eighteenth will be the regular school board meeting at seven thirty PM, which will be held virtually as well. Next, we'll move to item nine, adjournment. Looking for a motion to adjourn.
Oh.
Don't move.
Motion, it sounds like we have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 So be it. Stay, stay safe and stay healthy until we talk again, everyone.
Thank you.
Good night, everyone. Stay healthy.
Good night.